Tell us a little bit about, like, you grew up in East Palo Alto. It's a city that is going through lots of changes. I kind of want to hear how you grew up, started reinvesting in it, and now you're part of the transformation, so.
Sure. I wanted to say thank you for having me today and thank you for spending your time today listening to the story. So my name is Lisa Gochet. It's a difficult last name. It's my ex-husband's name. I'm not married to it, so if you say Gothie or anything else, I do understand you're talking to me. My family moved to East Palo Alto in 1967. So my parents were married at the time, and when they divorced, we were raised by our mother. So she raised six children in East Palo Alto. And working, when she finally started working, she worked at Ravenswood High School. If you know East Palo Alto, that was the one high school in East Palo Alto. And as a teacher aide, we're very fortunate and grateful that she was able to purchase a home for us so that we wouldn't have to move around. But I am a product of the community, having done my schoolwork and everything in the community. And I'm very fortunate that I was able to raise my children after I divorced. Wanted to look at some of these pictures. Lisa in the fourth grade, look at those braids. Lisa with my mom in the kitchen of the house that she finally purchased. You know, we were poor growing up and didn't know it because we didn't have everything we wanted. But our needs were met and we had love and hope in our home. I was raised by a mother who, if you visited our house, nobody walked away hungry. She had a magic pot. I was like, she doesn't have a, you know, now that I think about it, she didn't have a lot of money, but she fed anyone who came to the house and she made sure that they were taken care of. The other picture is my daughter's graduated. She graduated from USC and a panel, panel discussion that we had. I can't remember what that was all about. But growing up in East Palo Alto during the tough times, you know, my mother never had to go to jail to see or get anybody out of jail. She didn't play. I had a strong mom. She didn't play, so you weren't going to do just whatever you wanted to do. So being raised in East Palo Alto, I got to see some of the challenges of others, you know? Even for me being raised in the community, there were people who were my peers who saw something in me and they wanted to protect me. So I had one colleague or friend who was in high school and I couldn't go to house parties and they wouldn't let me do anything. And she told me that I was her innocence. So she wanted me to remain innocent and be able to protect me. And I'm grateful for her and that community.
Nice. So you were there all the way through high school?
I was, yes, all the way through high school. I lived in the community. So during the really tough times, we used to be a really close-knit community. And it felt like when we got to high school, I don't know what happened. You go to, you grew up going to the same school and then you go to different high schools. Now there's this rivalry and it becomes really odd. And then drugs came into the community, which really devastated our community. And at the time, we were an unincorporated area. East Palo Alto didn't become a city until 1983 and we became a city by just 15 votes. And part of that determination is that we wanted to have our own, we wanted to control our destiny.
So you were a county property or?
Unincorporated.
Unincorporated, so that would mean a sheriff's department, no police department. They were just literally folks that would respond from any given area. There was no context, they weren't always assigned to that area.
No, no. And that just was something that the community wanted to make sure that we had our own police department so that we could have a relationship with the police department.
That's important. We hear that a lot in unincorporated areas as well. So then you graduate from high school. It's a tough area. What happened with your career?
Sure. So I got married, got married and moved away. And I was in a very controlling relationship, abusive relationship. And so when I finally divorced my husband and I couldn't, there was no other place I wanted to be other than East Palo Alto because even with East Palo Alto's challenges, I knew I had family and I had support. So I came back home without a lot of work experience because I wasn't allowed to work while I was married and didn't have much money. I actually came home without any money. And it was, I went on, I applied through this temp agency and I was given what was supposed to be a two-day assignment. And by the grace of God, it turned into five years. I started out as a receptionist. By the time I left, I was an executive assistant and then things started to progress, progress.
What kind of company was that with?
That first one was a healthcare company. But as I moved up, I finally worked in some companies and I worked for a CEO and he was let go. And I tell you how networks work. He was being let go and I was like, you know, they're going to let me go. And what he did, he made one phone call to a VC firm and they weren't even hiring at the time. They created a position for me. That's just favor. You see favor that's happening. They created a position for me and I worked with them for nine years.
Nice. Yeah, it's one of those things that we always talk about is when we walk the street or we connect with folks that are really struggling, we can help them in the short term, but it's our network. When we put our networks to work for people, it's amazing how our relationships that we have can really benefit other people in significant ways. So you worked that VC job. How long did that last and what was that like?
It was nine years and it was amazing to see people developing medications and devices and drugs that would help community. But when that company decided to move back to Boston and I was like, I'm not going to go. Now I've spent nine years with the company. I looked for different jobs within the VC field. No one would hire me because I didn't have my bachelor's degree. Nine years of experience, no bachelor's degree, so they would not hire me. I knew that education was important and it's really what separates and often it's what separates us. I have three young adult children, so I put my children through college. I went through and I did the community college. I knew I needed to get my degree because I was like, I'll never get caught in this position. And I was like, I want a program that will pay for my college. And here comes such a company to the council meeting talking, it was study.com at the time. They were providing 25 no-cost bachelor's degrees. You had to complete, it was all on your phone and everything. So in 2018, I decided to go back to school. 2019, while serving as the mayor of East Palo Alto, I earned my bachelor's degree and been a business administrator.
Look at you. Okay, so I heard a big jump. So you worked at a VC firm, they ran off to Boston. You were hunting for something to do. You've been surrounded by mind-blowing innovative concepts that get funded. You see companies getting started. You start losing that fear of like starting something new. But you end up doing city work. How did you make that jump from the tech world or the VC firm to suddenly being part of the city governance and government?
So I've always been in both fields. Well, for the last 12 years. If you'd asked me 12 years ago, would I be an elected official today? I would have told you no. I had been asked multiple times to run for office and I said no because it felt like really icky. You can't do anything right, you know, people are, sometimes people get into it for the wrong reasons. And it was on one occasion when my daughter was home from Spelman College, she overheard someone ask me to run for office. I had said no once again. She waited until we got home and she said, Mom, if you're not at the table making decisions, someone else will be making decisions for you. I trust your decision-making and I know you can do it. She was the one person I couldn't say no to. Because I want her to be courageous, I want her to be fearless and take chances. It's about taking chances.
Nice. So Palo Alto has an interesting model for the way they run the city council and mayor. Talk a little bit, because you've been both, city council and mayor. How does that work in that town?
So you're elected to the city council and then the city council decides the leadership roles. So I have, like I said, in November, it will be 12 years, so I'm so close to 12 years. I have served as mayor and vice-mayor three times each. And when you're in that leadership role, you get to set the agenda. You're the spokesperson for the community. And those are the things that really helped drive and direct the city.
Okay, so now you're engaged in the city itself and the city has an unusual reputation. It starts to get that reputation of murder capital of the United States.
Yeah.
And you're there, you're living the adventure. Like, how do you take a city that has degraded to a level where life is lost on the streets on a regular basis and turn that around? I mean, that's a huge problem, it's a huge crisis. What was going on in terms of city council and some of the things you were working on to make a change there?
Sure. So what happened, it happened even before I made it to the council. And you know, this work isn't done in a silo, you can't do it by yourself. So it took city councils, staff members, clergy, faith community, nonprofits, the police, all to come together to work on this process. What the then-city council decided to do, we put a ballot measure on to tax residents of East Palo Alto. We collected money and we invested in the nonprofits. Because what we heard from our youth at that time was that they needed jobs. They needed something to do. They needed to believe there was more for them than what was happening in the streets. From then, there was a nonprofit that I'm currently the chairperson of, Live in Peace. And Live in Peace derived from the error where we were saying rest in peace. And that organization said, why can't we just live in peace? And so now they're working with young people who wouldn't graduate from high school, helping them to graduate from high school. Those who don't want to go to college, they're helping them with careers like manufacturing and other careers. And those who want to go to college, they're helping to pay for college. So really changing the mindset of those who are in the community. Going back to Measure C, Measure C funding provided resources for an additional police officer. We were able to, and what our police did when we were on council, well, since I've been on council, what we wanted from our police chief was to become human to the community, not to be the car that comes in case of emergency, but really to have an opportunity. We said to the chief, get out the car and walk the neighborhood. Take an officer with you and get to know the community. Because now you become human and that's what community policing is. When they just want to talk, they're not fearful to talk to you, but you become a part of the community. And that's what happened.
So your community starts to come alive. We have a lot of photos up here. When I asked for a couple of photos, you stepped it up and gave us a lot of things up here to talk about. Maybe you can kind of highlight a few of these images here and kind of tell us some of the stories going on here?
Sure. So this one here is, oh, this one here, let me stand up and get out of the way. So this one here, it was during George, right after George Floyd was murdered. And I'm a protester, so we were out protesting. I always told my police, if I get arrested, just come and bail me out. That was his job. The next one, I sit on the Stanford Community Council and I got to moderate a panel at Stanford's Health Matters. The next one is Devonte Adams, who is from East Palo Alto. He dedicated some exercise equipment to one of our parks that had been notorious for just a lot of issues and problems. And as you can see, the youth are in the park. That last photo, that other photo, we would go on bike rides during COVID, invite the youth out and get them on bike rides and get them out. So that's some of the members from Live in Peace. We rode across the Dunbarden Bridge. I didn't know it was going to be that difficult, but I made it home. Here, this is Canopy. It's a nonprofit that plants trees. The tree canopy in East Palo Alto is very limited. And we know that when you think about health equity, if you don't have enough trees coverage or to clear the air, there's a lot of asthma rates because of where we're located next to the freeway. This is another, this was a block party that we had. And so some of the individuals who were in that area, this could have been National Night Out because that's my bicycle and I ride through the community on my bike to different areas. Again, another event in the park, getting the face painted. The next one is a Day of Love. This is where a nonprofit will bring our unhoused into the park and just show them love. Bring clothes into the park, feed them, provide services. And there are a lot of people just to uplift that unhoused community. And the last photo, it was during COVID. Our Boys and Girls Club, when everything shut down, they brought in chefs and cooks because our youth still needed to eat. There were some youth that weren't eating at home so that they would cook every day. And they were providing like 2,000 to 3,000 meals to the community. They would cook the meals, put them in the containers and we would hand them out in cars. So five days a week, you could come and get a hot meal and on Fridays, you could come and get groceries.
So what was that doing for you in the community? Let's just kind of talk about, so you start doing all of these activities. What does that start to do for the community? Do you start to see changes before this, after this, during this?
We started to see changes before this, before this part right here and during, you know, when I go back to what we were doing with the police, we had a fit zone program. You know, some of our parks can be overrun by unhoused or those who are just in the parks. So our police had a fit zone and what they would do is go and play volleyball with kids and activate the park so that we could return the park to the community. And once the kids and families felt comfortable, then they returned to the park. And now you see kids playing in the park and it was great to see.
Yeah, I think we see a little bit of that in the Tenderloin. There's a little teeny park, but it is flooded in San Francisco with kids because the Tenderloin is the most kid-populated area in all of San Francisco, but it's got very, very small places to play. So having those parks come back and make themselves available to the kids is huge for our community itself. We got some more pictures here. You start to actually get engaged with your city officials. And what do you see in terms of your police force? There's been a lot of issues with the police relationships with the city. How does the community change the police force and how does the police force kind of work with the community here?
It's a partnership. It has been a true partnership within East Palo Alto. And they're members of the community. I go and sit with them on different events. So like on New Year's, I will go and have dinner with them before they go out and we will make sure that we're praying for them and that they're okay. This is a senior, our senior would bring Santa into the senior center and our then-police chief would bring, his wife would come and sing and they would give them gifts to the seniors. So it's really humanizing the whole community and it's showing that they have a heart. They're out doing great things. Our police department will raise money and they do a toy giveaway every year. Our National Night Out is really led by our police department and making sure that community members get to know each other and we become a resource. So, yeah.
Got a couple of celebrities.
And then I have a picture with Kamala. I was invited to Moffitt when Air Force Two landed to come and greet her plane. So was glad for that as well.
It's a big deal from East Palo Alto to be invited out, to be part of the gathered community of those guiding our country. So that's pretty amazing. So in terms of changes from the city, you took a city that was riddled with gangs and crime and it had the auspicious title of being the murder capital of the United States. You did have, last year, I think you had zero murders in your city. That's amazing.
Was grateful. So I was the mayor in 2023 when we achieved zero homicides. And I remember the chief was like, don't say anything about it. We were like, on New Year's Eve, we were trying to get there, like, can we get there? Can we get there? And so when the new year hit, everybody was so excited that we achieved that feat. We had gone from this to where we are now, where people feel comfortable in the community. So very, very proud. And again, it's not one group doing the work. We have church groups that will come in and pray for the community. We have nonprofits who are really carrying the weight. They're the ones that are doing the work because the city can't do it alone.
And you have some really active churches and nonprofits in your city. I mean, they recognize, or they're recognized as being thought leaders and interesting groups. Who are some of those groups and some of the people you work with in East Palo Alto?
Sure, I would start with Project We Hope, Pastor Baines. He has his own church, but he runs our unhoused shelter. So with that, he does a lot of work. He partners with us when we have to, I don't want to say clear homeless encampments, but when we were out in the community. So it's Project We Hope, Live in Peace, One EPA. And I know if I start calling names and I leave somebody out, I'm going to be in big trouble. But there are a lot of great groups that are doing the work. St. Francis of C.C., a lot of their sweet home, new sweet home. There are a lot of churches in the community that come together. Just last week, we had Ignite Peace Pray event where churches came together and they bought carnival rides and popcorn and things just for community, for the kids to have fun and have a place to.
And you did it in a public community area?
We did it at one of the middle school grounds.
Got it. So Pastor Paul Baines actually came to one of our innovate events, was part of a panel discussion in San Jose, where we, what's that? It was in Mountain View, sorry. Yeah, it was very close. And was part of our conversation about how do we work on making our communities improve? And I know in my area where I live, we built some small housing and he played a strategic role in helping us figure out, how do we work the county? How do we work with the city itself? And he gave us some models that we implemented. So we leaned on him a lot in terms of how to do that. He's a good guy. So you're city council, you've been mayor a few times, the city's on its way back. So what's going on with your career now? You're running for a new office. Tell us a little bit about that. What's the thinking behind that change?
So yes, after being on council for 12 years, before then, so my daughter, my one and only grandson was born in 2020. And I know that now is the time that his brain is developing and it has been the best gift I could ever have to be called grandma. And I was like, I want to spend more time with him. I want to be able to, because sooner he won't let me hold his hand and he won't have time for me. And so I said, okay, I'm not running for office anymore. And then someone reached out to me and said, Warren Slocum is terming out of office. Have you thought about running for his office? And I was like, no. And I took, like, let me think about it. I took a couple of months and I decided, why, again, why not me? Because somebody will be sitting there and we want to make sure that we're thinking about the whole community. So I decided to run for office and the primary, there were five people running for office. In the primary, I was the number one vote getter. I had 46% of the votes, so close to winning outright. So now it's down to two of us who are running for this seat. And I know the issues are the same, you know? I know that my voice will matter on a board when it comes, because I have life and lived experiences.
So this is a supervisor position?
It's a board of supervisors for Sematyo County.
Sematyo County. Tell us a little bit of the difference between city leadership and what a supervisor does in terms of impacting cities like East Palo Alto?
So the leadership is very similar, but cities don't have resources really. It is the county that has the safety net resources. So leaning in and being able to impact who, you know, where the money is going and how we're going to make sure that the safety nets stay where they are robust enough so that individuals are taken care of within the entire county. But whenever I walk, people go, what does a supervisor do? But it's like being the mayor of a district.
Yep. No, I know that we, my own personal experience in getting housing started for the unhoused could never have happened without supervisor. The cities don't have state funds. It comes from the supervisors to make sure there's a check and balance. And those supervisors play a very key role in supporting projects in those cities because they're the ones doing the local handoff. So they're super, super important.
We were the first city to start an RV safe parking program during COVID. And it's because of the relationship with our county, our supervisor, Warren Slocum, and the county manager, Mike Caligie, that we were able to pull that off through the work with Pastor Baines as well. So it provided, we took some families off the street. We provided them with wraparound services and put them in transitional housing. At the end of it, most people were in apartments or in different type of housing and we were able to get them out of their RVs.
So your city went through a lot of changes. Do you have like an individual story of someone that you're super proud of or that you can kind of share that story with someone who was a probably the icon or the target of what you wanted to see happen more in your city itself? I wondered if you could just share a story with us?
You know, there are a couple of people, you know, I would go back to my mother and when I told you the story of, you know, feeding and making sure that everybody was taken care of. And she taught me to have integrity and that's important. It's looking at Bob Hoover. We call him Uncle Bob. He is, I know in his 80s at least now, he's still teaching a golf program. He works with Live in Peace. You know, he was a part of the leadership that made sure that East Palo Alto became a city. There are a lot of shoulders that I stand on today that has made it possible for me to be the elected official and the person that I am.
So tell us about Live in Peace. You brought this up a couple of times. It's a nonprofit. It's something you started. How did this get started and kind of what is its focus?
Yeah, so I didn't start it, but I am the board chair. Again, it got started during the era where people were dying all over the city and everybody had the shirts, Rest in Peace, with a picture. And that's when they said, why can't we just live in peace within our own community? What we had heard and what a lot of the challenges were, like, people didn't know, like, how to take. I won't say they couldn't take care of themselves, but you can't be what you can't see in most cities. So where's that job that I'm going to get that's going to give me enough money to keep a roof over my head? So some of our kids wouldn't even graduate from high school. Live in Peace has staff that's in the high school, working with those students and with staff to make sure that they're staying on track and that they're graduating, not only graduating from high school, they're going to college and they'll take them on trips and expose them to different things. Often, we just have to be exposed to other things to know that there are different possibilities all around us.
That's amazing. Yeah, it's a reoccurring thing we hear in a lot of the exercises and programs that we help run and direct is give me a safe place to live, help me find a job, give me a network, right? With those three things, people can be successful and they've got to be able to kind of reach beyond that. So we've gotten to this place where, you know, you've gotten to tell us your story. And what we'd like to do is see if we have any questions out in the community. Want to grab a mic? I think Dan's got one over here. We'd love to be able to field questions.
Don't be bashful.
There we go. Because we'd like to learn from you a little bit about what we might do in our own cities or own towns.
Well, I love your story. I love the fact that, you know, you didn't move to Boston, you didn't move out, you came back to East Palo Alto. Are you familiar with Mother Dorothy Daniels? She's the one who?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So my question is kind of moving forward. I know we still have the human trafficking challenges today, but that is huge, you know? The drop in murder and 2023, no murders. So congratulations. My question is, you know, with the transformation of the community, how much of it is gentrification where the locals are just being priced out, you know? And like, you know, the community's changing. Like you said before, even when it was a tough place, it was home for you. There was something, there was this powerful community there. And all these forces are like changing that. So you know, there's something in East Palo Alto that was probably better than some of the most wealthy neighborhoods we have. Is it, as it's developing, is that being lost? Or what are you doing or what are your visions? And how can we all help to make sure that that's strengthened?
No, I appreciate that. And you know, we have to be deliberate when new people move into community to make them feel like they're part of the community. You can't gentrify unless somebody's really willing to sell their home. So as people come in, where's the new place? So when I meet new people, I'm like, how do you want to get involved? What do you want to do in the city? Because there's enough to do here so that they don't feel like they're outsiders. Like, you've chosen this community, let's continue to be a community and work together. But for those who are still there, we still work very closely together and we have community events. And even when there's challenges, you have to be able to talk about it and work through those issues as well. But I still feel like East Palo Alto is very strong. I'm very fortunate that my neighbors, like I have neighbors who live across me and around me who have lived there since I was a little girl. My neighbors next door to me, I've known since their kids were children. So we've known each other for a very long time. Some of those ties are still in the community.
What about like, is now, you know, baby boomers are passing on, going on. How many of those homes do you think will be able to stay within the family?
You know, that's important. You know, financial literacy is a key component to any of our communities. Understanding what it means to own a home and how to manage it. Like, if you can put your house in a trust where it's safe, put your house in a trust. So because if you don't, if your parents die without a will, how do you hold on to it if you don't have the resources, right? So teaching the community about what's needed to keep a roof over the head. What I found in early days, people would just want to sell right away. When my mother passed away, there were some in my family who just wanted to sell the house. And I'm very fortunate that I could, I bought them out. So I own the house that I grew up in and those who wanted their money were always looking for a place to live. I live in the house now that I grew up in. I was able to purchase that home. And I'm finding that people who are coming back are saying, you're still here because once you sell, it's a one-way street. You can't afford to come back. When people were selling their homes and moving to other places, had they had the financial literacy, they would have known that you can leverage that property to buy the second property, but you still have a home here and you're still anchored.
Yeah, I want to come back.
Yeah, I want to come back to the same issue of gangs in the community and the wonderful story. I'm from Oakland, the East Bay. We still have a huge gang problem. And, uh, it sounds like your gang problem has, uh, probably not disappeared, but is made very small in relation to what it was. And I think you've touched on it with, uh, Live in Peace and some of the other things and being right in the schools. But I really would like you to elaborate on, uh, how the impacted change, especially, uh, to young men? Because gangs are usually run by young men. And you talked about they had no place else to go and, and no, nothing to do. Well, that must not be the case now. And you've alluded to it a little bit, but I'd like you to talk about it a little bit more and how big the problem was, how many young men you're dealing with? Are they all going on to college or, or what's making them now have better alternatives to being in a gang?
No, thank you for that question. You know, some of, some people were incarcerated during that, that time. It's inevitable. If you have people losing their lives, um, you're going to have some people who are incarcerated. When you live in a community also like East Palo Alto, what happens is in community, they don't trust the police. You know, snitches get stitches. I'm not going to tell what's going on. So there wasn't a lot of that, 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 um, collaboration. What I found in the, in the highlight of the crime, there were adult men who were willing to stand on those corners and white hard hat. They call them the white hats, I believe. They went and they were not afraid to say, you're not going to sell drugs on this count, this corner. I'm not going to allow it to happen. And with them having the respect of the, these younger men, that made a difference and changed things. What I also found that, um, in 20, I think it was 2015, President Barack Obama was in office and we would go to Washington DC to meet with the White House members and members in, um, our legislatures. Um, and it was during a meeting that I was in a meeting at the White House that when President Barack Obama was in, was launching his My Brothers Keeper Initiative, which had six initiatives. It was to change the outcomes for black and brown youth. Number one was to make sure that our kids were entering school ready to learn. A lot of our issues as our children don't feel comfortable. They're not reading. They're not doing what they need to do and they don't want to stand out and be pointed out. So sometimes kids are acting out in, in class. It's a reason why they're acting out. Two, we wanted, we wanted to make, we wanted to make, we wanted to make sure that the, the youth were reading at grade level by third grade. Because we know that children from preschool to third grade, they're learning to read. But from third grade on, they have to comp, be able to comprehend because they're reading to learn. If you don't have those building blocks, how can you be successful? The next one is to make sure that the youth were graduating from high school. When they graduated from high school, we wanted them to be able to go to college. Going to college, what careers are they coming home to? And then lastly, the six initiatives was to make sure that those who had gotten into trouble were given a second chance. Let's not hold them in that place because we know that they can change. And that My Brothers Keepers initiative, I brought it back to East Palo Alto. We worked on it for a little while. Some of the other communities are doing it as well. But if we keep that mindset and that model in place, that is very helpful. And also when we treat youth like saying, we see you, that helps them too. Some things that we have to do is also make space for them to talk. How do we know what they're going through if we're just the adult and not able to listen? So where are those opportunities where we can lean in and listen? I think that, that's what helped us a great deal. The work continues. There's still a lot of programs that are college track, making sure the first generation students can go to college and come home and they're funded. Um, and there are many programs like that. The football teams. One of our youth football, um, coaches brought in mental health training for the, for the youth because who knows what's going on at home? But to be there and be supportive of the youth was very important and impactful in the community.
So you brought up second chance when people coming back from prison. How did you do that in the city? What were some of the, the models or what, what were some of the groups that actually actively worked on second chance opportunities for folks coming back to the community?
It was the police department and Pastor Baines again. Pastor Baines is the chaplain for the police department. Like bringing some of those gangs together. Like, look, you can either, we can either work together or this could be the outcome. I don't think anybody wants to go spend the rest of their lives in jail, but making them, making, again, working with them so that they understood that there was more to it than what they were being told or what they were being fed in, in, in the street. So, um, those groups that came together. Live in Peace is another one. There are other, uh, church groups that would go out and really work with the, the, the youth as well. The Boys and Girls Club would provide a program. So there are a lot of nonprofits. One EPA, um, that provided, um, um, jobs for the summer. Summer jobs for families that needed it the most, not just anybody, but they went in and you had to have, you met these requirements. And if you're, somebody would have been in prison, that youth had a better job of getting a summer job. And once you're exposed to opportunities, you start to think differently. Yeah.
So tell me about the white hats. That was intriguing. I'd never heard that before. So individuals who wear white hats, was there a specific, particular group or was it just a community decision?
I don't know the whole, the, the whole group and how it worked, but it was, uh, the elders of the community. They put on white construction helmets so you knew who they were and they were in the community. And they would have, you know, they, they were coaches from football or baseball. So the community is, knew who they were. So you weren't, you know, you respected, that was somebody that you would respect. Maybe a, a pastor from a church. You're not going to act up really in front of a pastor unless you're just really out of control.
And then in your community, do you guys have recovery centers or, or facilities where folks had obviously had drug issues where they could go locally to get help?
Yes. Yes, we have, um, Free at Last is the organization, um, that is, that continues to work, do the work in, in East Palo Alto. And, uh, just met with Vicky Smothers, who is still running the program. So, um, and we work with our county. The county provides resources, uh, voices of recovery and different programs. So everybody is working together to try to meet those individuals where they are. And if you find yourself challenged, there are programs, classes, meetings that you can go to, to get the support that you need.
I'm watching the time here just so we have a couple more. So East Palo Alto, we've got a couple of questions if you want to, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Thanks. Thanks so much for coming and speaking to our community. In the 1980s, my father was the director of the Police Foundation where they did a lot of the research and modeling on community policing. So I'm so happy to hear how effectively you were able to implement it and what a big impact it made. That's amazing. Um, I'm the coordinator of the workforce development DAO here at the House of Web Three. And you talked about all the wraparound services. I'm curious if you saw any career development program or workforce development program in the community that helped with the transformation that you saw.
You know, I don't know if that there was a program that helped with the transformation, but I'm glad you said that. What we find in East Palo Alto, we're in the middle of the innovation economy. We're an underserved community and our, our residents aren't necessarily participating in the innovation economy because of education or whatever. So our council, a few, a couple of years ago, we put another ballot on where we're raising money to train our residents for the jobs of the future so that they can stay housed. Again, gentrification comes when you're being pushed out. But if we can think about what are those next jobs and bring those programs in, bring the training in and, and help. Our, our labor and our tip programs are very helpful. Bringing those jobs in to the community and making sure that residents have access to that. It's something that we're going to continue to work on and it's something that's very much needed.
Thank you for your presentation and all the information you've shared. Just for clarity, having access to you or an official and the nonprofits and the community, do you feel that made a huge difference? Because in that area, there's, there's some programs that's known throughout California or probably throughout the United States. One of them, like you said, with David Lewis and Free at Last and the work that they did in the community of folks that were system involved. It came out and didn't want to see their, their siblings or neighbors or youth end up in the same situation. A lot of cities don't necessarily have that open door where they can communicate with public officials and that they're taking, you know, get the opportunity to speak with them. Do you think that maybe a key component to why it was successful in your areas? Because you were able to communicate with, uh, faith-based nonprofits or just people in general?
Yes, that is definitely a collaborative effort. I'm elected, I have a job because of the residents of East Palo Alto. All elected officials have to remember why we're, and who we're elected by and who we need, who we answer to. Right? So that is the, the thing that, that is urgent and we have to be mindful of. And there's a proverb, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. So when we work together, we can get more done.
Yeah, I had a, I had a question. My name is Marcello. Very nice to hear.
You came from like the vo- voice from, I had to find you in the audience, so thank you.
I mentioned to you earlier that I spent four years in East Palo Alto serving as a dean of students. And when you're in that community, you know, you could hear about the problems that East Palo Alto has. But when you're in that community and seeing it, it's a whole nother experience. You know, it's only 2.6 square miles long, um, very easy, very walkable to, to get around the community. And when you're in that community, you're, you know, on one block, you see an average household income of 60,000 or less. And quite literally you walk one block over and average household income shoots over, you know, six figures plus. So with that disparity and East Palo Alto being so close to, uh, you know, the capital of tech where you have billions and billions of dollars being brought in, how do you sort of get the buy-in from all the wealth around you to sort of reroute some of those funding into marginalized communities?
No, thank you. And thank you for saying that. It's, it is, we didn't do this alone. It was the philanthropic community that really leaned in as well to help out because we couldn't do it. The city didn't have the resources on its own. So there are organizations that came in and, and put a lot of money into our community and they continue to invest in the community. And you're so right. When you think about East Palo Alto, it is a creek. The San Francisco Creek is what separates East Palo Alto from Palo Alto. And from homes that are probably three, four, five million dollar homes. If you go over this creek, as a matter of fact, um, Steve Young is, lives in one of those houses that are right over there. The, the, um, the Zuckerbergs live over in that, that community. So you have very wealthy people, just a creek, that, a creek that's separating us. Our Four Seasons Hotel is in East Palo Alto. They don't like to say it, um, but they are in East Palo Alto. And as soon as they're, as long as they're giving me those tax dollars, a revenue to run my city, that's fine. We still hold them to let people know that that is East Palo Alto. But that is so, so true, right? There's a huge disparity within the community. But the hearts of the people who are the working families, the working people, I wouldn't trade them for anything in the world.
I'm, I'm blown away. I mean, like to see that East Palo Alto is such a model of all these issues, you know? Community policing, transformation without, you know, well, I mean, dealing with gentrification and all that. It's really encouraging and then projecting it forwards, you know, like, you know, the greatest days are ahead of it. You know, it can be this vibrant community that's the center of the innovate community of, you know, economy. But you do have in, you know, murder, you've made huge progress on the murder issue. Can you talk more about what are the challenges with human trafficking? And, uh, what is the strategy? I'm on the board of Vanessa Russell's amazing organization and she's working there. How can we show a graph, you know, a few years from now about human trafficking disappearing in East Palo Alto? And make it a model for communities all over the world?
Sure. And thank you for bringing that up. You know, this is going to take a collective effort. We all need to sit down and work on this. What I found on one occasion, there was a young lady who was being trafficked from East Palo Alto, but she was taken to Oakland. Because the police departments don't talk to each other, they knew where she was, but Oakland couldn't go and get her. And then you have these, these issues where, um, you know, how do we hold the individuals accountable? It is a silent thing that's happening in communities where we have to, I think we, it starts Ted, with our youth, our young ladies, understanding what love really means. Anybody who loves you will not harm you and they're not going to put you on the street. So when women, young women feel their, their, their self-worth, they won't, they, they will fight that. But you know, these predators who are on the streets, looking at the, and it's not just young women. This happened to some, some young men as well. We have to come together and remove this, you're in a different county, you're in a different city. I can't cross this invisible line. I will tell you that our issues are like water. They knows no boundaries. Let's remove those invisible boundaries and solve the problem. We have to have police who are willing to work with the different jurisdictions to get things done. And then not hold the victims and make them like accountable for what has happened. How do we provide that support? I am willing to sit down and figure out what has to happen. I know that Vanessa and Love Never Fails is doing a great job of getting the work done. But I've seen some young women who won't come in, who won't, then they won't testify against this person because they don't feel protected or they, their distortion of what love means is something different in their head. He loves me. He said he loves me. He's taking care of me and that's not the case.
It's almost like, you know, we talked about financial literacy being the key. It's almost like relational literacy into the schools, into the families, into the young ladies who are primarily vulnerable, young men too. You know, to preempt the whole process.
I, I, I think that would be great, especially these young women who don't have fathers at home and are looking for that love, that unconditional love. Unfortunately, we have predators who will take advantage of that.
Systems that, you know, one of our partners, Stuart Pereliett, is part of this community, is focused on, uh, strengthening, uh, families and fathers because of that very issue. The fatherlessness and how much that relates. But then there's systemic issues, you know, like our fathers are locked up and then we make it very, very, very difficult for them to integrate.
You know, I saw something on Netflix about, it was a father-daughter dance in Chicago where the, you know, the dads, you know, and they were so excited. I think they were almost coming home anyway, but, you know, and then they got to sit there with their daughters. They prepare the daughters to go in and have this dance with the dads. And the dads had to really look at themselves through their daughter's eyes, like you've let me down. By you going to prison, you've let me down. You've not protecting me. This is your job to make sure I'm okay. And I think it helped some of them.
That's great. So we talked about East Palo Alto. You guys have had some painful, painful crises. But because of those crises, you get lots of organizations working together and you've, you've overcome some really big ones. What are some of the things that you would like to see East Palo Alto, um, overcome? What's your vision for East Palo Alto? You live there. You have hopes for making changes. What are some of the changes you'd like to see in that city?
We, we continue to work on ensuring that, um, our, our residents are not displaced because they don't have enough, the resources to stay. So in investing in education, um, you know, in San Mateo County, well, in the, in the state, you know, you can go to school for free. Go to college for free at community colleges. Encouraging young people to do that. Making sure that we have tenant protections that are protecting residents so that they just can't be evicted for just any reason. Really looking at those things, but thinking about the future of East Palo Alto. East Palo Alto has a flavor to it. It's a, it's a personality that, that lives within the community. We don't want to lose that. So that means we have to keep some people housed and in place, um, providing those support, that support in, you know, making sure that members are participating in the innovation economy. One thing I didn't say is that my day job, I do have a mortgage paying job. I'm an elected official, but during my mortgage paying job, I'm the senior vice president of inclusion and belonging with the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, where I impact policy and initiatives that impact workforce development, education, racial justice and equity and health, with a focus on health equity and healthcare innovation. Right now, within my, my organization, we're trying to make sure, where are those jobs? As we're trying to diversify the tech innovation and this, this innovation economy, how are we going to make sure that individuals have opportunities? And in working with, with the organizations, there are some jobs that just should not require a jo- a degree. How do we remove the paper ceiling so that individuals can go to work and get the job done?
Yeah, I think we're trying to tackle that as well with our workforce development efforts as well. Lisa, thank you so much for coming down here. Guys, let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
So we'd love to, I, I know there's more questions and I think a lot of people wanted to ask you. If you want to be available, we can also use the conference room over there. We do not have a DAO meeting after this, uh, uh, meeting today. There's some of us going out to a project across the bay over there that, um, requires that we clean this, uh, room up quickly and kind of move for the next group. But Lisa, I want to thank you for coming up here. This has been really great. Thank you so much.